Mr. Alt?
Here.
Mr. Beistall?
Here.
Mr. Calero?
Here.
Mrs. Love?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Polakowski? Mrs. Rhodes?
Here.
Mrs. Shipley?
Here.
Mr. Benz?
Here.
Paige Weaver?
Davis Simon?
Here.
The records show that Mr. Polakowski telephoned earlier and had to work late this evening, so he will not be here. This is his comments.
Before you hit the stopwatch, Mike, I have some rather important information I'd like to give you about an item on your agenda, NB4, that I just recently learned about. You may want to consider that. It's entirely up to you, but it's important what I can share with you. When I watched the last March school board meeting, I couldn't believe my eyes and ears. Discussion was held regarding fees and costs of what I call "The Great Money Grab in the Sky," AKA "A Bond Refinance." Everybody involved gets a piece of the pie, led by Piper Jaffray, your friends, your words. One issue was the $7,400 paid to the school board solicitor. I received phone calls, and it has come to my attention that the public has absolutely no idea of what happened. Let us begin by telling you that I use the school board budget and contracts for this information, which are public documents. Under the 2,300 category, you will find the item that reports the retainer of the school board solicitor. This is $1,100 a month to pay him or her to attend two regular board meetings and maybe a special meeting from time to time. Therefore, the common monthly average is to pay the solicitor $550 for each meeting attended, just as what is happening tonight. In addition, if he or she participates in negotiations, more money is allocated. In the 2012-13 budget, that amount was $35,000. Above and beyond that, for any extraordinary expenses or services, such as court appearances, hearings, phone conferences, et cetera, an additional fee is paid of about $100 an hour. The Southmoreland School District also pays for the solicitor to attend PSBA conferences, seminars, and et cetera, and pays for him to earn required continuing education credits. For all major tax appeals, extra costs are paid to the solicitor. According to my undoubtedly faulty memory, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, as best I can recall, every tax appeal during my board tenure handled by the solicitor was lost. The district lost them all. Getting back to "The Great Cash Grab in the Sky," or "The Bond Refinance," six members of this board voted to give the solicitor $7,400 to review a document, or maybe two. That is the equivalent of paying him $100 an hour for 74 hours to review, not write, a document. That time constitutes nearly two full work weeks. I want to thank the three board members, Alt, Calero, and Miller, who voted against this travesty. The average per capita income in the Southmoreland School District is less than $20,000 per year. The amount paid for this document review is equal to more than four months of a district average per capita income. People are hurting. Attorneys working at the Westmoreland County Courthouse government recently got a raise to $60 an hour, having worked for $45 an hour for the past 10 years. There are only four possible reasons for the vote by those six board members. Number one, maybe they absolutely didn't have a clue about what they were doing. Or number two, they absolutely did know what they were doing and couldn't care less. I personally consider this a slap in the face to the hard-working taxpayers of the Southmoreland School District and the state of Pennsylvania. Reason number three is that puppets perform as directed. They do as they're told. And number four is not for public discussion. No doubt the solicitor will jump up and declare that he does many more things for which he does not charge. I know otherwise. As a school director, I called his office and left a message about a question I had related to an important school issue. No response. At the next meeting, he advised me that he got my message, but he would not answer my question until the entire board gave him authorization to do so. A billable event. In conclusion, as a school director, you are ethically bound to be good stewards of the public's money. Good stewards of the public's money. Do I need to say more? My final question for the six board members who voted yes, to a comparable $100 an hour for 74 hours to review a document, step up and tell all the citizens in the school district, not me, tell everybody how your vote was for the kids. Can I comment on NB4, Mike? It's up to you.
You have 15 seconds. Is the board interested?
This is for your information, not...
Well, that's why I'm asking if the board is interested. Majority of the board.
It's for your benefit, not mine. I read that you have... You are possibly going into an agreement with PIC in Westmoreland Council to partner with and host a pre-K counts program. And you're going to lease a room for $9,000 a year. Can you tell me where that room will be? We'll answer this. Is it going to be at Roughsdale?
No.
No? Okay. I'm just going to speak to you from my experience. I worked in a school district where they did this. And get ready for a lot of staff grievances. What happened is they brought in these 20, 30, however many kids, into a regular building. And now, all of a sudden, everybody else had all these additional duties. Kid comes to school with a rash, we go get the school nurse. Kid throws up or soils himself, you go get the school nurse. Throwing a tantrum, get the guidance counselor. Have a discipline problem, get the principal. You're putting extra custodial duties on. And what these people said was, "We're not getting paid for this. You've slapped all these extra responsibilities on me, and we're not getting paid for it." I'm not saying don't do this, but I would be very careful about the wording in that contract. I don't think you're a partner, and I don't think you're a host. I think you're a landlord. You're a lessor. If I were you, I would be very careful to put in there wording that specifically describes what you're not responsible for. I had this experience. It was not pretty. So whatever you do, I just hope you do it for the benefit of the district. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Paul. Dr. Feig's comments?
Go ahead.
And I'll be brief. You know, I wasn't going to say anything, but since it's been brought up, I took some notes here. I'm still having a hard time wrapping my head around that $7,300 or $7,400. I don't understand what we're paying it for, because it can't be to tell us it's the best deal, because we don't know that. If it's a complicated document, we've already heard that the solicitor and the business manager are not knowledgeable enough concerning bond issues. If it's easy, then why are we paying $7,400? And if it's the going rate, it's something we choose to pay. We weren't forced to pay. So why don't we take the initiative and make it that you get paid by the hour for these kind of things? It reminds me of that little town in California that decided that all the big shots with titles and degrees were going to pay themselves a half a million dollars, because they thought they were worth it. And they're all in jail now. I just don't understand it. I really don't. I'm at a loss for words. That's all, Mike.
Thank you. Minutes?
It is recommended that the board approve the minutes of the March 6, 13, and 27, 2014 meetings.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes. Questions? Roll call. I'm sorry. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes eight to zero with one absent. Business and finance, fund accounts?
It is recommended that the board approve the March 2014 revenue report, expenditure report, bills payable, accounts payable, and March 2014 treasures report.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second.
Sure.
Second by Mr. Beistall. Questions? Roll call.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes eight, zero, with one absent. Old Business, Policy 246, Student Wellness.
It is recommended that the board adopt the revisions to Policy 246, Student Wellness, which was posted for 30 days, and that was presented at the February board meeting originally.
Motion?
So who?
Motion by Mr. Miller, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes eight, zero, with one absent. New Business, 2014 Potential Graduates.
It is recommended that the board approve pending the completion of required credits the list of 2014 Potential Graduates, which was presented at the April 3, 2013 discussion meeting.
Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Love, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Beistall. Question on the motion? Roll call.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall? Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes eight, zero, with one absent. 2014-15 WIU General Operating Budget.
It is recommended that the board approve the budget of the intermediate unit for the fiscal year July 1, 2014 to June 30, 2015.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Love, second.
Mrs. Shipley?
I'm sorry. Mrs. Shipley?
Sorry.
Second by Mr. Miller. Sorry about that. Questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes eight, zero, with one absent. Advertise for IU bids for athletic and maintenance supplies.
It's recommended that... That shouldn't say IU bids. It should just say bids. Misprint there. I apologize. It's recommended that the board authorize administration to advertise bids for athletics and maintenance supplies for the 2014-2015 school year.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calero. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes eight, zero, with one absent. Pre-K Counts.
It is recommended that the board authorize administration to partner with the Private Industry Council of Westmoreland Fayette Incorporated to host the Pre-K Counts Program. This program is funded by the Office of Child Development and Early Learning and would lease a room from Southmoreland School District for $9,000 per year. And in that motion, Mr. Potonic had handed me some legal items that, according to statute, have to be acknowledged by the board. So the board, in applying for the approval of this lease, would certify to the best of its knowledge and belief that the building, to be used leased for educational purposes, complies with applicable local, state, and regional laws and regulations affecting health and safety. The lease agreement contains at a minimum a description of the building or premise that the... is to be leased and its intended use, the term of the lease, the rental amount, the due dates, the party responsible for maintenance and repair, alterations, additions, and insurance, and the party liable in the event of any of the following con... Can't speak tonight. Condemnation, damage or destruction of the building, premises, or equipment, and payment default. So in voting, adopting this motion, the board is acknowledging those items as well.
Where is the word?
It'll probably be in the second grand hall at SES.
Should we include SES in the motion?
Yes, you may.
I would recommend, Mr. President, that you do that. And the idea here is that I will get some additional language to Dr. Molnar to send back to these folks about what we want to see in the final document. And it will... It'll be in a similar type of language that we've been using for the Roughsdale leases to cover those points that the Department of Public Education wants to see us have included in leases.
Mike, do we need to make the motion to discuss the wording of this?
Yeah, I'm going to get a motion in a second. Do you have a motion? Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second by Mr. Miller. Questions on the motion?
Yes. Mrs. Rhodes brought it up last week, and I'm just wondering, should we be using the word partners? Because you mentioned that, you know, we didn't want to have anything to do with, you know, having any responsibility. Should that not be that we are the leaser, or the lesee, or whatever the proper word would be, as opposed to partner? Because partner tends to lend someone to believe that you're doing something with the other half. And all we're doing is renting out of space. If you've got problems, that's on them.
To that extent, we will also be including lunch. They will be utilizing our food service department at a fee, obviously. So that won't be at a cost to the district. But when we do the final agreement with them, we can certainly include those kinds of parameters.
I would recommend to the board that the phrase be "to lease to and provide services" as set forth in the written document.
And those services will just be pretty much limited to lunch?
They're on that document that was given to the board at the previous meeting. They list them all. I think...
Mr. Martin Ellis handing in. Southmoreland School District reads to the following responsibilities in supporting the pre-K counts partnership. Well, we're not going to use the word partnership. Provide classroom space. Provide ancillary services, including food service, study hall service, nursing services as necessary. And then it goes on. Include pre-K count staff and professional development activities. Include pre-count students in appropriate special programs or school activities, such as musical programs. Invite pre-k counts parents to become a member of parent-teacher organizations. Accept developmental or other pertinent family and student information. Maintain membership on the Fayette County Early Care and Education Committee and 10 dollar required meetings and trainings.
To me, that sounds in essence to be that they're just going to be another part of the school. You know, I mean, what isn't it we're doing for them? Maybe that's a better way to put it. What aren't we doing for them that we do for the rest of the school?
You don't mandate the educational program or provide supervision of it, for starters. But to tell you more, I don't know more about the program.
To ask you a question, Mr. Alt, we're pretty much, according to what is listed here, doing the same kinds of things for them that we're doing for IU classrooms that lease our space.
But don't they lease that twice as much?
Actually...
I thought it was like $1,600 or $1,800.
Actually, the IU classrooms that are housed for school age... I'm talking to our school age kids, not our Roughsdale kids. They don't lease at all. We're a host district, and they don't... They do not pay rent for the classrooms that meet here that are school age, just as we send students out to other districts from time to time. And there's no rent paid at those districts either. That's just part of our responsibility as being members of the intermediate unit. So we host, for example, the hearing impaired classroom here at the middle school. We host the life skills classroom at the primary center. There's no lease there. It just happens to be where those classes meet, and they use our cafeteria or nursing service. Those kids come to our assemblies and are considered part of our student body, just as when Norvelt hosted the hearing impaired program, or when Mountain View hosted the hearing impaired program. Some of our students went there and received those same services from the host district.
But when we do lease, we do lease at a much higher rate than that $9,000?
I would have to... I don't remember offhand.
I think it's about twice that much.
Well, again, this is only one room. Okay? So twice that much, they're leasing more than one room at Roughsdale. But again, I'd have to look at those figures. I don't have them committed to memory.
Mr. Miller?
Kind of a disparate situation or relationship. How would this compare to our... To our working with the Y on providing space for... Don't we provide a room and space for the Y?
Yeah.
Is that a parallel or not?
I think we'd be doing a little more for these kids, because they meet during the course of the school day. And we'd be included in some of the activities and things that go on during the school day.
Eric?
Number one, maybe a question for Jim or Dave. Liability insurance. Do we have to increase it any because we're increasing the numbers or because these children are coming in? So liability would stay the same.
Right. And I believe they provide a certificate of insurance as well.
And transportation for them? We're not involved with transportation?
Parents' transport.
Okay.
And... They're willing to arrange their day in such a manner that it doesn't interfere with our arrival and dismissal, or they have a shorter day than we have.
So they'd basically be here at the same time, those services by janitors. They'd be providing the services anyway. It's not additional services that anybody's providing? They're doing it in the course of their job. They'd be doing it anyway.
A room clean, precisely.
And these are children that are... Who live south from...
Primarily, yeah. There may be one or two from, you know, Collinsville, Bullskin Township. But for the most part, I believe it's our Fayette County residents.
So we would be taking advantage of the fact that they're becoming familiar with the primary center, because this is probably where they are going to be going.
Yeah. Well, actually, they'll be familiar with SES, because that's where the room is. But our excitement about this is they will become familiar with beginning letter sounds, ending letter sounds, how to write our names, how to sit in a seat and pay attention, how to be a student, basically.
So it will help us.
It's part of the kindergarten transition. That's, you know, one of the things we hear a lot about is early childhood transition. United Way is very big on that. As a matter of fact, they give us money to help transition. We work with Head Start programs and preschools, and that's how we fund our kindergarten kickoff that we have every March. So kindergarten transition, just as transition out of school has always been a big thing, transition into school is now becoming... People are recognizing the importance of having those kids come to school ready to learn, so that they are, you know, literate and have numeracy skills by grade three.
I have one more question. I read an article in the TRIB last week, and I don't know if it's the same group or what it is. I think it was Albert Galton. Is this along that same lines or run by the same group? Because that article mentioned that it was a failure.
I'm not familiar with that article, so I can't respond.
I don't know if anybody else can shed any light on that. But I believe it said Albert Galton had this program for a number of years, and it was a failure.
I didn't see the article. I don't know.
Anyone else?
The program is only just for one year, though. We would have to renew next year.
It's an annual... It's an annual lease, yes.
Any more questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes eight, zero, with one absent. Overnight trip for Highland Requiem.
It is recommended that the board approve an overnight trip for the Highland Requiem to travel to New York City on Friday, April 25, and Saturday, April 26, 2014.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second.
Seconded.
Second by Mr. Miller. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes eight, zero, with one absent. Policy 005, Organization.
It's recommended that the board approve the posting of policy 005, Organization, for 30 days.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes. Questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes eight, zero, with one absent. Surplus property.
It is recommended that the board declare items from the former administration building as surplus property for the attached list. And you have that list in front of you. I would be happy to entertain any questions or comments regarding that.
Motion? We'll get a motion in a second. Motion by Mr. Calero, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Miller. Questions?
Our thought would be, when the administration, after this is voted on, and if you indeed do declare these as surplus property, we would then move them to the field house and advertise a tag sale, and the general public could purchase them.
Now, where are you going to auction that stuff off from at the day there?
I asked the auctioneer, and they didn't seem to think that there was enough there to draw out the kind of a crowd that would, you know, spend very much, if any, money on things like that. So it's really not very much. And they thought that, you know, if there were a lot of items, yes, but with the amount that's here, they felt that it would be more a crowd that was interested in the building, and the stuff would either sell for very little or not at all.
Some unique issues and in terms of the cyber charter schools especially, the way those have gotten out of hand here in Pennsylvania, it's somewhat of a unique situation and the other states have had greater control of them. Yeah, I'll just say a few, I gave you a long report here, but I'll just say a few comments here on a few parts of this. You know, I really want, the biggest thing that this is over the past weekend that I really, really value and of being able to be a part of it is to see this, the way American public education has tried over the past century, almost a century and a half to provide, give every child an opportunity to learn, to be successful and to contribute to society and to see people there from Florida to Alaska, Delaware to Oregon. This, one of the speakers that stood out was Thomas Friedman. He's actually a foreign affairs columnist for the New York Times. But he told of how he got interested in American and public education and he said he backed into this because he believes we're in a major cultural change and it's the digital revolution. And he compared it to the 500 years ago, the Gutenberg, the inventing of the printing press and believing that in 10 years from now, everybody will have access to the internet. And how that, in the past, you see how that has changed the need, to change the needs that we have in education to be creative and to have high-tech competency. Our students need to be entrepreneurial and literate in the knowledge industry. And he gave the example, he lives near Baltimore, 40 years ago, the biggest employer was Bethlehem Steel. Today, it's Johns Hopkins University Medical Center. And you could just translate that for U.S. Steel and UPMC in our own backyard here in our context. He sees two important areas of work, creative work, professional and technical in the knowledge industry and routine or vocational and this work in the local level, whether in building houses or being a nanny to kids. What is crowded out is routine or in other words factory or manufacturing work on the national level. That is being taken over by the robots and by the Indians as in India and the Chinese or the Mexicans. So what do we tell our kids? Now, this was kind of interesting, what he said. Think like an immigrant, optimist, but also paranoid that someone is behind you and you know that things were bad, where you, that things you can get better. So he said, "Think like an immigrant, optimistic and paranoid. Think like an artisan, make it an individual project, not a factory approach." And I just sort of raised the questions and these were what he said, but exactly, but how do we keep thinking of our schools as a, as maximizing as an artisan? And if you think back to the medieval, the guilds where you were, before the factories came along, where you took great pride in what you did. And how do we think of that in our, in our schools here of making, giving that something extra? Always be beta, this comes from the technical process is not quite finished and just to think we have a tremendous achievement here in the Blue Ribbon School, what's our next step is going on as a process? And then this fourth one, I thought it was a fascinating, "Think like," and this is exactly a quote, "Think like a parent, realize the internet is partly a sewer of misinformation, bias, hate and pornography." That means modeling good judgment, wisdom and values so kids can learn and choose in a civil society. And so, and he raised the question, "How much do our teachers realize their important parental role?" And I really thought of that, and this is, just to expand on this a little bit, because I do feel strongly on that. And one of the days, it was interesting, I just came out of that. And then I was in the coffee line and the person next to me wasn't in our conference, big convention center there, and we got to talking, have five children, they're homeschooling. And I asked him, "Why, why is he homeschooling and why are they homeschooling?" And he said, "Because there's so many hours and they want more parental influence on guidance, on making good choices for their children." And it just occurred to me that it is, whether we look at it or not, we really are in a competitive situation today because homeschooling is an option and any number of other, but for ourselves, to think of ourselves as a board and as teachers, that information, the internet is readily available now, but to be wise and to give judgment, to give morals, values, that is, that is a part of our project. Now, I know it's a slippery slope, it's a tricky business that we live in a pluralistic society and how to do it appropriately, but nonetheless, a big, a big issue. Finally, he gave the example of being like the waitress at the Perkins Pancake House, exploit what you can control to maximize customer satisfaction. He said, "They ordered pancakes and the waitress gave, she said, 'I gave you some extra fruit.'" And he said, "That waitress is my hero because of all the things that she could control." That was one of the things that she controlled was how much fruit, so they gave her an extra tip. And he said, "What's the value-added thing that we do in education as a board, as a teacher, as administrators?" Now, that is an interesting. I'm gonna jump over these. These are seminars, if you want to talk about them, I'm not gonna bore you with the legal. We just, we talked on legal issues, there was a very good seminar on the, on the boards needing legal issues, financial issues, board and superintendents relationships. That was a fascinating one because Tom Gensel, he was the Pennsylvania School Board Director and he is now, this is in his first year. And by the way, Pennsylvania's all over now, the national organization because of Tom Gensel there. And was it two years ago, remember Stand Up For Public Education? Well, that's now the national.
How is it?
So shirts and banners and everything else, Stand Up For Public Education. So that was an interesting, an interesting one there. Another one kind of intrigued me there and I went to it, Board Behaviors Linked To Student Achievement. This was a prof down in Southern Mississippi and made, in his study, did correlation of boards and how they behave in student achievement. Charter schools, so that was a, by gosh, an issue all over, all over the United States. By the way, the charter schools, now, I'm not talking about the cyber charter, but charter schools are largely an urban phenomenon and they're here in Pennsylvania and all over and, I wanted to talk about them, he has to put on the policy there that the board had, that the National Board has for charter schools. And then the last one, I'll just say a few, Saving The Great American School Board with that kind of intriguing title. But this was fascinating, just to think of, I enjoyed it, it was a workshop and there were, there were people from, where were they from, they're North Carolina, represented from North Carolina, Arizona and New York. But here was the question they posed, and they did it historically, if you think of our grandparents, they went to what? They went to a one-room schoolhouse and that was the neighbors organized themselves and they had total control of that school. Okay. And then mid-century, the state and almost all of the states have a constitutional amendment or law saying they will provide education for every child in the district. So with that, of course, comes then, control. So what, in the 60s, our little schools here, what was that? That was state mandated, Rough, East Huntington, Scottsdale. So that, so I'm just giving that historically to say, how much control do, and this is the way they pose it, how much control do we have as a local school district and as a local board and to what extent are we like the franchise of the state? Are we really just, and I don't say it just, but are we like a Wendy's who provides classrooms, provides hamburgers, right? But it's really a franchise and is that our relationship to the state? I came away from that, you can see the comments there, but I came away from that and finally at the end, it was about a, about an hour of just total complaining about how bad the state intervenes, whether it's unfounded mandates or not, you know, and not funding it. But I came away from it and I said, okay, in fact, I spoke, I don't often speak at these things, but I did at the end. I spoke up and I said, probably, Pennsylvania's, by the way, Pennsylvania's a unique example. Pennsylvania has 500 school districts, so if you subtract Philadelphia and Pittsburgh, you're talking a lot of small school districts in Pennsylvania. But I said that from where I sit, if, let's say that we are a franchise and it's in our autonomy and we think we have quite a bit of control, it's just kind of illegal fiction, then I think it's still an important one. By the way, I don't agree with that. I think we have quite a bit of autonomy and if I, we choose personnel, that's as a board, we make those choices, very crucial choices. Budget, we don't have total control, but we have considerable control on our budget. You could keep on policies, but many of them are also state mandated and we, whether it's legal. But here's where, here's where I came in, I think on a local level, I like to think of ourselves as that waitress in the Pancake House. What we have control over, let's do it well and let's, let's do it with, emphasize that, emphasize what we, what we can do because I think the strength of the local school district is that we then have relationships. There are parents who send their kids and trust them to us, to the public school. They pay the taxes, they pay half the taxes, almost what is a 40% of the cost of the public school. They are a very important part of this, of the project. So to think of ourselves as having control, having good amount of control, even though we don't have total control of our, of our education project is very important. So, hey, I'm, you know, that's, by the way, I come away from it and I come away from these meetings being, sitting around here, even though I know we're supposed to be here every Thursday night and that's what we committed ourselves to, two Thursdays a week and the rest of it. But I consider it a great honor to sit around the table and also to see it in the larger sense. And so, to me, it's not so much a case of saving it as serving it and as doing, as doing well on. So, by the way, if you get a chance to fit your schedule or anything, I know we can't all go and we don't want all go in the same year and some of us go to the state meeting. But it is, it is really beneficial, I thought, to go, so hope somebody else or several people go next year. So, there we go.
Just to piggyback on what you're saying, I think that's one thing that scares me about Pennsylvania talking about going to the county-wide school districts is because I think we would have less control then as opposed to now where we do have more local control because it's not county-wide school districts or wherever they want to go to.
That's the, those are, those are the issues.
Because they want to go from 500 down to about 100 or even less than that.
Yeah, there is some, and, and you know, you make the case that there are efficiencies, efficiencies of scale and whether it's in the office or, but the downside of it is, and I don't know what I mean, I lived in Latin America for five years and I saw centralized where schools were a franchise, there weren't local school districts. And where schools were administratively run out of the, out of the federal government, out of the various states. What it seems to me we lose is that kind of contact with the parent and the kind of control, whether it's in policies, personnel, finances and theirs. So, it's a downside, but yeah, very true.
Superintendent's report?
Thank you. I gave you information in your board packet about the pavilion at Roughsdale and I thought we should maybe chat about that a little bit this evening. Dr. Scott and I were out touring the district last Friday and happened to notice that it was in some pretty serious disrepair. I spoke to Mr. Mizwa and he actually provided us with some pictures which you have at your desks here this evening. As you can see, the roof has some missing tiles and that would be in picture number two, not tiles, but roof shingles. It also has a hole in the roof which you can see, I believe, in picture number three. The supports are badly rusted and actually one of them is off its moorings, you can see that in picture number four. So as you can see, the pavilion needs some work. Actually, I'm not sure that it's in a very safe condition right now, notwithstanding the fact that it's not aesthetically pleasing. So as I see it, the board has some decisions to make in terms of what we want to do with that pavilion. One of the options, I believe it was built by the Lions Club originally, if my history serves me correctly, we could seek an organization such as the Lions Club or Kauanis that might be interested in doing some repairs to that pavilion. We can undertake to do those ourselves and the third option would be to eliminate the pavilion in its entirety. So I just wanted you to think about that a little bit this evening. I don't think we need to reach a decision this evening, but I think next month we will want to talk about that. In the meantime, I am willing to see if there are some service organizations around that might be willing to do that. And I have asked Lee to cordon off the pavilion with some yellow tape and some no trespassing signs, just because we're concerned by the fact that some of the supports are indeed askew at best. So we'll report back to you next week, but I just kind of wanted to put that, plant that little seed. Lee, you had to add about the pavilion, are two of you all still there?
The pavilion, as you see it now, it's just a shell. It used to have water, electricity and a kitchen and after vandalism hit that over the years, they finally removed all of that. And that's why you just have an open pavilion today.
Anything else on the pavilion? There's just kind of an informational item for you there.
Just a question for newer board members, am I right in remembering that this was one of these Huntington groups that did build the pavilion originally?
I believe it was the Huntington Lions, Mike.
I couldn't quite remember which group it was, but I didn't think that we did.
No, we did not.
Anyone else have questions?
The only thing is, I feel as if we ought to go to the Lions Club in that area up there and see if they want to repair it because it is utilized through the summer for tournaments, baseball, for our athletes or whatever you want to be through the summer, or maybe even they could go maybe to the ball, baseball outfit. And three of them go together and maybe do something about it because I really think it's utilized through our students with the baseball and different things that go on up there. That's my opinion.
It is a community asset for Roughsdale and in its current condition, it's a community nuisance, you know, so, but it would be nice to have it become an asset again.
I would agree with, I would agree with that. Let's be good property owners here, I mean, and serve the community and if we can get clubs or somebody to, but, but not even stop there to really, I'd like to see us, if they don't do it, do it sufficiently, that we even invest some money in it ourselves rather than look at having it be in bad shape.
And I think in-house, we can probably get a pretty good idea of what it would take to repair. We know the size of it, we know what a square shingles costs, we can find out what roof jacks cost, we know what plywood sheeting costs, you know, we know what labor costs, you know.
We can out to the service organizations, you maybe give them an idea what it would cost them if they were willing, that way they would, they might come back and say, if he jumped, gave a third or whatever, or we had to do a third, we might be able to get a split something.
Would that be a project for VOTEC?
That's, yeah.
I mean, we could check into VOTEC doing this and it wouldn't cost us the labor and material donated somehow, because the VOTEC's sitting there while we're here.
You have different companies, you have like CNC lumber, Busy Beaver, 84 lumber, they might even be willing to donate some materials, depending on, you know, giving up one down.
Right. All right, we'll explore some options there and again, I just, I wanted to plant that seed, you know, for you a little bit today. The next item I have on my report, I'm actually gonna call on Mr. Mizwa again. For those of you that have, well, I guess you all did, tonight you came up the driveway and you noticed that there's a pretty, pretty seedy spot as you come up the driveway. And Lee, I know has been looking at that and I know he has at least one estimate, but can you give us a little history in terms of why it looks like it does and then what it might cost to repair?
Well, at, towards the end of last year, I looked at it and I had a couple of companies come in and give me an estimate, but we could tell that one section was in very poor condition and we did have plans to address that this year. Now, the company that did come in broke it down into two parts, the subbase is damaged, so they'd have to repair the subbase and I only have an estimate on the subbase, but the binder in the wearing layer on top is almost a fixed, it should be a fixed amount for that. But the subbase, once they get down and take it off, that's where they would ask me to come over and inspect it when they get down so far. The approximate cost, just to cover that section, if you drive by it, there's two light poles, probably between the two light poles or a little bit past it, approximately $24,000. When I was with the representative from the paving company, we just decided to stop at that point, but actually the entire drive should be repaved.
The quote you have is for the small section, correct?
Just for the small section, right where the road turns off if you're coming up the hill and down past this spot, there's a light pole, just downhill from the light pole.
Lee, just, yes, for our edification, what's the difference? Because I know if I were to have my driveway paved, it wouldn't cost that much money. Why is this so much more expensive?
The traffic and the weight of the traffic.
So there's more asphalt in?
More asphalt. The subbase is, it'd be five inches of subbase and then you would have approximately, you have three inches of binder and then an inch and a quarter of the wearing. So you're looking at nine inches, not including the more stone underneath.
All right, so, good.
None of this is under contract or our warranty? Construction warranty from?
No, no.
Building, no?
That driveway, Ken, was put in, probably, no, I don't think. The driveway, the driveway around the school was redone, but the access road has not been done for probably 10 or 12 years. So we actually had the contractors that were there, actually did some patching in terms of some damage that they did. This damage is not that. If you look at it, you can see where actually the pavement's been cut and replaced and that was done as a part of the construction project.
This contractor here did a lot of the original paving on the site. I didn't realize that until after he came.
Lee, the $24,000, and that's primarily because we're dealing with the subbase, obviously we're not gonna do that through the whole driveway, so.
No, it's, it was broken down to $18,278.
For the subbase?
No, for the top layer. The subbase is an estimate at a little over $5,000. Now, when we were, he actually put a note on here that a school district would determine the extent of the repair once they opened it up, if there was any more in that area. But it just seems like.
It was not even the subbase during, for the whole length that he's discussing, the subbase is just that area where there's actual, the actual large stones and the clay surface is kind of pushing up through the asphalt.
And that was patched quite a few times before.
Anybody know the reason why this is going on tonight? Is there water underneath there that has actually made the freezing stall, it's actually made this erupt different times? Or can we put a drain in there to get rid of it so it doesn't keep doing this?
Something we can find out.
There is a drain.
Because something's causing this, it just, just doesn't, the rest of the driveway's fine. There must be water getting in under there, freezing it, going and erupting this right in that spot.
It could have been due to a crack where the water's actually coming in from the top as well. We can have the company look into that and see if they can determine a cause.
It's not an insurance job, right?
Don't we wish?
It was a bad winter and most municipalities are having pothole problems and road cracking problems too.
There's no turf here, huh?
No, we could turf it, I guess. But if you're listening to the news, you know, the city of Pittsburgh, Enfield Township, you know, everybody's having road problems, you know, because of the winter that we've had, so we're just, one more.
When are you gonna try to get a fix, think that something has to wait?
We're gonna, we're gonna come back, we're gonna come back to you and ask probably at the main meeting for approval and I would think that it would be after school's out because we can't be, I don't think that can be done on a weekend, that's gonna have to be closed down.
Any other questions?
At least one lane at a time.
Anyone else?
Thanks, Lee.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Rust Grim Field, the turf work is pretty much on schedule. Mr. Mizwa and Mr. Swink have been monitoring that pretty much on a daily basis. Yesterday, a group of us met with representatives of Vasco Shaw Sports Turf and the installer. We did a little bit of fine tuning in terms of, you know, how the turf is to be installed and placed. Charlie is very satisfied with the decisions that were made there in terms of meeting the needs of the athletic teams and we expect delivery of the turf on Monday. So look for green on the field by this time next week. Just wanted to talk to you about something that I encounter on a regular basis here and it came to mind because it happened three times during the past week, three occasions. Once was at the sixth grade chorus festival, it was last Friday evening. Once was at the high school during our blood drive today and earlier this week, I was approached by a field experience supervisor at St. Vincent College. We'll start with her. She was highly complimentary to our middle school and her comment to me was that she's been in and out of every middle school, junior high school and most elementary schools within a 40-mile radius of Latrobe and has never encountered the kind of quality that she's seen in our middle school. She specifically talked about the organization of the teachers, she talked about the rigor that goes on in the classrooms and she specifically mentioned the behavior and demeanor of our students. The county chorus concert on Friday, several directors, again, from other districts sought me out to compliment me on how well the event was organized, the hospitality that was shown to them and again, the comport of our students. And finally, today, I was at the blood mobile and the manager of the Red Cross outfit that was there, you know, he said, "We really appreciate high schools that put on blood mobiles," he said, "because kids just want to give blood all the time and we go home stressed out and with headaches because kids are goofy at blood mobiles and they carry on and they pass out and then they scream and do all kinds of stuff." He said, "But we love coming here," he said, "because we love your kids." He said, "Your kids organize things well, they behave themselves and they're actually student leaders." And I don't hear this, just this week, I hear it over and over and over again, when we take our kids places, we get nothing but compliments. So, you know, we hear all the time, you know, that our youth is contributing to the downfall of civilization. I want you to know that the Southmoreland kids are not contributing to the downfall of civilization. They make me proud every day and I hope that you and the community are just as proud of these guys as I am. So thanks to you as representatives of your student body and to the parents in the community for sending us such, such, such great kids.
Administration?
Well, I think it's, a lot of it is who.
It's a lot of common right here.
That's true too, so, thank you. Just to give you an update, a group of administrators, secretaries and maintenance personnel will be down on Parker Avenue tomorrow, trying to get the administration building as empty as we can, getting files moved and relocated. So you know what's going on there. And the final item I have, I'm gonna ask Mr. Benz at the next meeting to appoint a subcommittee to look at the labor agreement we have with our non-affiliated personnel and we thought, we might give them a better name, but those are the people who are not affiliated with the PSEA, they're not part of the Act 93 bargaining unit, they're not part of the secretarial meet and discuss group, they're primarily our network administrator, our van drivers and our classroom aides, so they really don't belong to any, any group. It's kind of that catch-all group, but we need to look at, at their. But we need to look at, at their contract, there's some inconsistencies there that need to be looked at, and we need to talk about, you know, where, where they will be for the next few years as well. So I'll ask Mike to appoint a committee next month, and if you're interested in serving on that committee, please let Mike know. And that concludes my report for this evening, sir.
Thank you. So, sir?
Your report tonight?
Citizens' comments?
Can you call the, Cody?
Well, she comes. Can I just read, is that April 30, 3 to 7, is that still on for open house on the building?
I believe it's the 28th, Mike, or, Levi?
Oh, okay, oh, I see. Is it the 28th, Monday, Monday evening?
Go to the website and see when you open, open houses.
The 28th, Monday, is that when the building?
It's the 28th, Mr. Miller.
Okay.
Okay, and citizen comment, Ricky Simon.
I'm sorry, stay out of my way.
We can't hear you, and neither can, neither can the cameras, so you need to come to the microphone, please.
It's not really an official comment, but I just thought, when you were talking about the pavilion, something that came to mind, because my husband does deal with it sometimes, is why don't you think about making it an Eagle Scout project? Maybe two Eagle Scouts, because it's probably a bigger project, but they're responsible for finding the funding, the donations, for the materials, and for doing the work. So they get credit, we get a project done. And then my other thing that I thought about, and it was when Mr. Miller was talking, and he was saying about the importance of parents, and I was just thinking that, I have never received, I've received a lot of mail, and sometimes I think, it's like silly, why'd you bother to send some of that, pay the postage on it? But one thing I haven't got was a survey. Are you satisfied with our business? Like a lot of other businesses do. And even, like a student survey, and I know you're gonna get a ton of garbage when you send that out, and a ton of people complaining, but there are some parents who are interested in education, who have successful students, want to have a successful school district, and maybe just out of those surveys, you just get one or two that would be worthwhile. So I think it's just something to think about. That's it.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Rhodes, second by Mr. Byste. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Thank you, Dr. St.
Thanks, folks, have a good evening.